Getting back to order. Kerry, would you like to report on the closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The council did meet in closed session regarding the two matters, actually kind of three, that the mayor mentioned before going into closed session. The first order of business was to determine whether or not it was appropriate for closed session. The council voted four to one that it was appropriate to go into closed session. Then the council met in closed session regarding the potential litigation item. No votes were requested or taken regarding that. And then the council also met with the real property negotiators regarding the properties that are listed on the agenda, and again, no votes were requested or taken. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Okay. Roll call, please. Council. Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Edgar.
Here.
Mayor Murphy.
Here.
Sunburst Youth Academy Student Council, Class 16. James Chavez.
Here.
Christopher Alvarez.
Here.
Nanelet Flores.
Here.
Jesus Lopez.
Here.
Stephanie Molina.
Here.
Michael Palomares.
Here.
Giovanni Reyes.
Here.
Destiny Miley.
Here.
Stephanie Padilla.
Here.
Alexandra Valvo.
Here.
Okay. Stephanie Molina will lead us in a Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please rise and stay standing for invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have invocation by James Chavez.
Before I say the prayer, can we have a moment of silence for the tragedy that happened in Paris? Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread; forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Thank you. For those who don't know, Sergeant Gutierrez, would you grab the mic and tell us a little bit about Sunburst?
This test? Okay. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Master Sergeant Gutierrez from Sunburst Youth Academy. I'm the commandant, or the dean of discipline at the program. Currently, we run two cycles a year for at-risk youth to change their lives. Our mission is to intervene and reclaim the lives of 16- to 18-year-old at-risk youth and to give them a second chance at life. We try to instill discipline, values, education. We work with eight core components with the Challenge Academy, helping them to improve not only in life coping skills, but physical fitness, academic excellence, and then all the other following core components. And I could go on for days on those things. But these kids that you see right here, this is our student council of our academy. They went above and beyond what all the other cadets have done in our academy to make it a better place. They hold the standard every single day. That is why they were elected to be here today. So if you can just please give them a round of applause. Thank you.[248.01][248.01](APPLAUSE). If you want any further information, you can see me personally, or you can go to sunburstyouthacademy.com and you'll find out our application process and how to enroll a student for Sunburst. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant. The council will join me for the presentations. Okay. While we get to our certificates, could we start with Mark Stanley, please? You're gonna speak and ... You don't get a certificate, so ...
Hi, Troy. I'm very happy to be here tonight. I actually represent the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy. The Rivers and Mountains Conservancy is one of ten conservancies across the state of California. Our board chair, I'm representing our 20-member board tonight. Our board chair is Frank Colonna, who's appointed by the governor. The man who's standing right here, your mayor, Pro Tim, Mr. Edgar, is one of our board members. He's served on our board for over five years, and we just wanted to honor and tell him how much we appreciate him in helping us control over $1 million of funding that comes to the RMC. Over $9 million of funding have come to Orange County, and millions of dollars that have been brought to the city itself. So we just would like to thank you for your commitment to our board and helping us move the agency forward.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.[394.12][394.12](APPLAUSE).
In our last board meeting, we actually presented him with an award for his service on the board, but tonight I also would like to provide him with a blanket with the RMC logo on it.
Which I'll use tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome.[413.62][413.62](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. You don't want to say a few words?
I serve on the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy because my colleagues here in the city council have supported me. We go through a city selection process with the county, and the city actually sponsored me, and I was able to be reappointed last month for another two-year term. So I just want to thank the city council for getting behind. I also see a previous council member, Mahia, who is also very supportive. Jerry, if you could just stand up, we can just acknowledge you for being here.[447.81][447.81](APPLAUSE). Jerry and I served together for eight years and did a lot of good work. And the park that's behind the middle school over here at Oak Middle School, she was there, and the rest of the council was very instrumental in getting the funding secured through the conservancy and doing that. So I just really appreciate the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Thank you.[468.84][468.84](APPLAUSE). Okay. As you know, if you've gone up and down the boulevard, Saturday, November 28th is Small Business Saturday in the city of Los Alamos. Tonight, we have Bernardo Cobian, the owner of the Cafe del Sol, right over here, our neighbor on the corner. Could you come up, please?[490.81][490.81](APPLAUSE). We have a presentation for you. It is Small Business Saturday. Oh, please.[506.31][506.31](LAUGHTER). No, it's just embarrassing one, right? It embarrassed the whole board. Oh, thank you for coming. As I said, Bernardo's been in business for nearly 18 years, quite a record for a small business in our little city. And as I said, he's our neighbor right across the street, feeds a lot of us on a regular basis. Somebody's got to cook, I don't ...[538.16][538.16](LAUGHTER). So thank you very much. We'll give you the mic.
Thank you.[544.66][544.66](LAUGHTER). Well, yeah, we just want to thank everybody for acknowledging my dad, you know, because he's been working his butt off ever since I can remember, you know, since before he even existed. Well, I mean, he made the American dream come true for himself and for his family, you know, just like anybody else. Still possible. You've just got to work your butt off, like, work, 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 dedication, dedication, and more work. You know, you've got to go through hell to get to heaven. That's my motto. So work hard, you know, stay educated, and you'll get somewhere for sure. Anybody will. Thank you.[579.23][579.23](APPLAUSE).
All right. Well, thank you all. Thank you. I always wanted to be blunt like that, but they never let me be that blunt. Okay. And we also have a presentation of certificate of recognition of Ted Apodaca, who was our News Enterprise editor. For appreciation, he's a services editor.[610.16][610.16](APPLAUSE). We'll give you the mic.
I just want to say thanks. I enjoyed my time at the News Enterprise and working in the city and the surrounding areas that we covered. Got to meet a lot of really great people and work in a really good community. So I appreciate this, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Hang on one second.[650.16][650.16](APPLAUSE). We'd also like to bring up Jesus Ruiz, who is the new editor of the Enterprise. Let him say a few words.[660.12][660.12](APPLAUSE).
Would you like to say hello? Yeah. I just want to thank Mayor Murphy and the city council for having me out here tonight, and look forward to meeting new people in the community, and just wanted to do good work for you guys. So feel free, my door's open. Send me an email, give me a call anytime.
Thank you. Thank you.[682.32][682.32](APPLAUSE). Bye-bye. Thank you, Ted. If you'd like, it's a great gift in this weather, isn't it? I know. It's getting hot in here today. Sure. If I can, I'd like to follow up for just a minute on our Sunburst Youth Academy that's here. They're actually in class 24/7 for five and a half months. They're getting ready to graduate on the 12th of June. They get over 50 credits toward their high school diploma. In some cases, it's enough to graduate. In some cases, it's enough for GED. And in other cases, they go back to their high school, get reintroduced into the area, and will actually graduate with their regular high school. Each year at graduation, we have prior class members who are ready to graduate who come back and walk with the current class. This is Class 16. And they come back and walk with them. But it's been a program for over eight years now that has been going on in our community. They've recently acquired some additional building space that's going to be remodeled, and they're going to be able to double the amount of students that they can take. Currently, they take about 200 to 210 per semester or per cycle, and they'll actually be able to take double that once the new facilities are acquired. I can't tell you enough, having been to their graduations, how much the program means to the students as well as to their parents, because in many cases, they were dropped out of high school, ready to drop out, didn't care, didn't think about their future. And they voluntarily attend this program. They are not assigned by a court. Their parents have to agree to let them come. There's no cost to the student to attend. They leave here as productive citizens for society. And when you hear the stories that they each tell of where they were headed and what they were doing in their lives, to their new charge and their new motivation moving forward, it's absolutely amazing. The fact that there's a military cadre in each classroom, however, usually deals with the discipline problems very nicely. So if we wanted to solve the problems with the schools, if we just signed a National Guardsman to each classroom, we probably could convert a lot of kids real early in life. But they have a fabulous program. I'm very honored to have them join us tonight and have the rest of the council here to meet you, and we look forward to seeing you all when you graduate on the 12th. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dean. This time, we'll go to oral communications. Any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any subject within the subject, any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are to be limited to no more than five minutes per speaker.
Good evening, mayor and council. It's nice to be on this side of the dais, I have to tell you. I'm here to request the council to pull item 9G from the consent calendar. I'm curious as to why this item is on the consent calendar. We had a great deal of turnout for the outreaches to the community, and they, many of them, most of them, were not in support of this. Staff said that they would stay in touch, and for those that wanted to attend the meetings, they would make sure that we were notified, and we were not. One thing that I wanted to clarify, I was watching one of the earlier council meetings, and there was a council member who thought that the parking meters were something to do with a parking issue, and that simply was not the fact. We initially looked at this as a budget shortfall, ways to come up with money to shore up the budget for us. So I'm asking, why are we moving forward when there's been such an outcry from the community not to do this? In the recommendation in the staff report, it recommends that the employees park in the lot where the businesses are. And I will tell you, I've worked in Los Alamos all my life, and that is exactly backward to what is customary. If you look at Cattella Deli, which is where I live, all of their employees park on our streets. We've learned to work with them and manage that parking issue without having any parking permits or any fights. And I just think that it's unsafe for our clients. Many of our clients are elderly. They use walkers, some of them are handicapped. And if you were to take us and put us in the parking where the business is and displace them and put them onto the street, it's an unsafe situation. It would cause us to lose business, and I think it would also cause the city to lose revenue. We've been told that if we want to park, we can park in Alf Shawnee's parking lot, which is right over, I believe, on Pine Street in Florista. At one point, that signage said only the people worked in the Hofshut complex could park there, and anyone else would be towed away. So that was not an option. I went there tonight. That sign has been removed, which is great to see. But my husband and I counted 70, potentially 70 spots. We counted the businesses just in that complex, and there are 30 businesses. If you give each business two parking spots, that only leaves 10 extra for anyone else. I will tell you that Hofshut at any given time probably has about 16 employees. That doesn't account for the people who are there in great numbers to enjoy their food. Once this measure is enforced, I believe that this parking issue will become severely worse for those who are employees and patrons of those areas. One of the other options that was discussed was potentially having some parking in the neighborhood. That was not listed in the agenda item, so I'm hoping that will be discussed if you pull this item moving forward. I guess the question is, if these things happen, where will we park? For the business that I'm in, three hours is simply not enough. We can have clients there for anywhere from four to five hours. If you could increase the three hours to four hours, that would be a compromise that would be greatly appreciated by the people in my industrial area. We will lose business for sure. We've already talked to our clients. When we had Edison out there, it displaced everyone. We had people parking over in Ginola Lumber, which was a big issue. They didn't want people that were not patrons using their parking, but that's what happened, unintended circumstances. In addition, the city will lose revenue. Our clients, when they come here, they don't just come for our services. They also eat here, they get gas here, they shop here. I'd say they go to a movie here, but we don't have a movie theater, so that's not an option. But I think it's something that you need to consider moving forward, this item tonight. And when we get to the street revitalization, one of the things that was mentioned is, potentially, if you go to three lanes, which you're looking at, if you were lucky enough to get the money from the federal government, then we could potentially lose 50 or more parking spaces. Where are we going to park? Our lot is too small to manage even just our 13 people that we have on at one time. I was lucky enough to meet with the mayor and some of the council members. We have about 13 people potentially if the salon is full, and that's just employees. There's approximately 20 spaces. That doesn't leave enough for the other businesses. So I would ask for you to please listen to the people when they come up and consider what they're telling you before you make any decision for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
I work at the salon where Jerry does, so I am a salon owner, I mean, a business owner in the city of Los Alamos for the past eight years, and I love working here. And just to reiterate, we have more employees at the salon than will fit in the parking lot, let alone what the other businesses open. And I also have clients that are there that are longer than three hours. So if it were increased to a four-hour time period, that would be great. I don't think it would be a problem for anybody. And I work often until nine o'clock at night, and I don't want to have to walk over to that parking lot behind Hofshut that's a block and a half away by myself at nine o'clock at night. So I ask you also to reconsider and have four-hour parking, or to at least not enforce the two-hour parking, I think is what it is right now. Thank you.
May we have your name for the record?
Jennifer Spear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nahid Idalati. And I'm working as beautician, 31 years in Los Alamos. And I'm paying the business license 31 years in Los Alamos. And I would like to ask for the parking also, because we are in a small shopping center. We don't have no parking at all for ourselves, and we have to park in the street. And I'm working five days, eight hours, so I don't know where to go to park for eight hours. Even for four hours, I have to, in the middle of the work, to move my car and go somewhere else. And sometimes we work until eight, nine o'clock at night. And it's not safe for us to go to the, cross the street parking and the other, you know, business, another business, or ... So we would like to, you consider it, really, for this issue. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also, I'm Suzanne Brookley, and I also agree with everything that she just said. But also, I work very late at night, sometimes till 10:00. And I carry a lot of things, bags and different things, that I bring to work and take home from work. And I don't want to be walking a block and a half to some big dark parking lot. I'm very fearful of that, very fearful of that. And I just had a hip replacement, and I've had some other problems, and I don't want to be carrying things at a long distance also because of my other problems that I have. So that's an issue with me. So if you can really take all this into consideration, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're the owners of Bella Hair Designers in the Los Alamos Center next to Hofshut. And we just wanted to voice our opinion and appreciate the opportunity to do so regarding the parking situation. We feel that pretty much everything that Jerry said, that we don't think that having any restrictions or any controls at this time would be appropriate for all the reasons that you've already heard. We feel that the parking can be managed as-is, especially in light of the hospital parking structure that I think everybody agrees is underutilized. And I think that if we are going to make any efforts to make changes, that would be the first place that we ought to go to, because that's already in place, and try to convince the folks there to use it, rather than going to all the expense and inconvenience and detriment to the businesses that have been supporting the city for so many years. Also, I understand that communication is important, and up until a few hours ago, we were not aware that there was any meeting for this subject to be on any agenda. So I'd like to request that in the future, the business owners that would be impacted by any decisions or votes should be included to represent themselves. Did you have anything to say?
Yes. I'd like to say that I may have at least 10 workers in the salon at a time, and when you count the parking spaces that Alf Shawnee, Sean Alf Shawnee has, and you count all the employees of that shopping center, it exceeds the 70 spaces that Jerry was talking about. So I don't know where these employees are supposed to park. If you leave things the way they are now, it works just fine. People come, people go, people always find a parking space. But when you start limiting time spaces and places for people to park, where are all the employees of that shopping center going to park? There are not enough spaces in Sean Alf Shawnee's parking lot. And I don't even know how they could accommodate having these other gals from another salon parking there. And if there was a restriction, Sean would definitely have to put a sign back up there again to say that it would be parking only for Los Alamos Plaza.
Thank you.
So, you know, I say, leave it as-is. It's working out just fine. People always find a space. Thanks for letting me voice my opinion.
Thank you.
And we would like to be informed further if there are other meetings to talk about it.
Okay, seeing none. Close the public comment. Go on to the warrants. Any questions or comments on the warrants? Make a motion to move. All second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Edgar.
Aye.
Mayor Murphy.
Aye. Number nine, a consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. So go ahead and pull 9G. 9G. What else?
9A.
9A? That's it? Shall I? Okay.
I'll move the balance.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If we could, let's take 9G first. What do you want to staff report? Sure, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. All-day street parking has become a preferred choice for employees in the commercial area of Old Town East and Medical Center area. As you can tell by the testimony tonight, many people prefer, many of the employees prefer to park in the city-owned spots, which we will call off-site parking. On-site parking, when I use that term, that's in reference to on the private property. Although there's a recognizable problem with employees parking in valuable on-street parking spaces, convenient on-street parking is generally available in the area, with the exception of a limited number at peak capacity, which has been right at about lunch. To address this issue, the city of Los Alamos put together a Parking Solutions Working Group to review parking for the area. The working group's findings were summarized within the Old Town East and Medical Center study that was provided to you on October 19th meeting. Thanks, Wendy. Within the report, the most frequent concern expressed during the outreach was that employees were taking up on-street parking needed for customers. The most effective and flexible means of managing on-street parking is to implement time limits. Now, time limits aren't new to Los Alamos. There's plenty of situations in Los Alamos where time limits already exist. And I'll show you the map that shows the existence. This is the proposed, and this is the existing. It's up there now. You'll see that there's a number of areas, including, look at the salon right here, across Los Alamos Boulevard, down Cattella, Cherry Avenue, and Pine, no, I'm sorry, Reagan, where there were already commercial time limits in the city. And thus far, they have provided some means of managing parking. In seeking a solution, the city council was presented with these findings, and those findings had the following recommendation, was to increase enforcement of the existing regulations, which we have, by the start of the second parking enforcement officer that began a couple of weeks ago. Step two was to implement additional time limited parking, and that's what we have Staff has completed its recommendation for the establishment of the time limits, and that map you have in your staff report, there's two 11-by-17 colored drawings in your staff report. The first one is the existing parking restrictions, showing the parking restrictions that are in the areas that were affected. The block, the big, large black numbers on the map are the block numbers. You have Area 1, Area 2, Area 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12, to help you easily identify the future restrictions we're recommending in the area. And to improve ... And to improve the management of the parking and eliminate the inconsistencies that are already existing, we're recommending that time be enforced from 8:00 to 6:00. Right now, you see regulations at 7:00 to 3:00, 9:00 to 6:00. You have some of them that are going into the late of evening, and then you have one that even says 24 hours. So we're also recommending some uniformity in the regulations there. Staff, and we're recommending in these areas, there's two different kind of identities in the area. You have an industrial medical area, and we're recommending two-hour parking in there, and you're having more of a commercial visitor-serving district, which is more of the restaurants, the salons, and the businesses that you would visit that are non-medical and non-industrial. And we're recommending a three-hour parking in those areas. And those areas are mainly the Los Alamedos Boulevard, Cotella Avenue, and the Pine Street corridor, and the non-regulated Reagan area. Now, the Pine Street Lot, that's a city-owned lot with 25 spots in it. It's a, it's a black bar between Section 4 and 5, if you could see that on your aerial photo. Staff is not recommending any changes to that, except for preventing overnight parking on that. We're recommending that that remain free until we can understand the effects of these new parking regulations. It allows us some flexibility for regulating in the future, and also allows kind of a relief valve for some of the charities and the businesses in the area to establish a long-term solution. What this program is attempting to do is to provide long-term parking on private property, and the short-term parking on the city-owned, off-site parking, or on-street parking, is another way to put it. So the circulating spaces will be in the public realm, and the non-circulating spaces, the more permanent eight-hour shift-type spaces, will be on private property. The adoption of the attached resolution that you have in your staff report implements the enforceability of these time-limited parking, and frees up the necessary parking for visitors using facilities in the area, instead of employees using it in the area. Now, as you've heard from the audience, you've heard many comments that employees desire to use those private spaces. And that's same with medical, and it's same with salon. You're seeing the, both, both parties are agreeing to that. Upon adoption of this resolution, staff will order the signage for the area, and installation will occur shortly after. We will begin having electronic message boards after the signs are installing, alerting the public of the new regulations, and giving them a window of opportunity before the enforcement. And we plan on having those installed and bagged around December 17th, and then if they're unveiled, when they're unveiled, it'll be right after the Christmas holidays in January, to offer some of that relief. At 90, on the 90-day anniversary of these parking regulations, we are proposing to do a parking study, another parking study, that mimics the first parking study, so we can compare apples and apples, and to see what solutions came about by implementing these time limits in the area. With that, the council has a resolutions in front of it, recommending approval of the limited parking within the commercial area of Old Town East, the Medical Center area, and the adjacent area going south on Los Alamedos Boulevard. Staff is here, if you have any questions. Many of the staff at the city have worked on this collectively, and we're all available for questions should the council have them.
Thank you. Would like to start.
I'll start, if I can. So, thank you, Stephen, for this, and I know we've met about this, and so, and refresh my memory, because I know I asked a question, I'm looking at my notes, but the issue we're trying to solve here is the, the public's use of public space for parking to frequent businesses. Is that kind of...
No. What we're trying to limit is employees parking on those public spaces for eight hours in a row, without having those spaces circulate.
Meaning turnover, circulate.
Correct.
And, and if I recall, it really kind of, looking at the diagram, it'd be really more of that Area 6 would be, I think, one area of concern, because of the, and, and I'll choose this word, but I don't want to make it sound really bad, but the abuse of employees of businesses that would, would use these spaces. I mean, they would park there for that, the workday, correct? And not, not have the turnover?
No, you're, you're seeing parking by employees in Area 1, 4, and 5.
I understand, but, but I understand, but, but 6 is the one that comes to mind, the surgery building there, right? That's kind of the area where members of the public that might want to visit the doctor's office or the nonprofits would not have a place to park, because employees are parking there, correct?
Correct.
And so, so that's one area. So the other part, like Area 9, over there on, was it Catalina?
Yeah, that's the trend offset printing frontage.
And, and we talked about that being, employees are using that because it's more convenient, right? It's, it's not lack of on-site parking, it's just more convenient.
Yeah, trend offset, offset printing has plenty of parking to meet their employee needs, it's just not most desirable. Some of the parking is as far as Humboldt.
Okay. And then, and then the, the need on Area 9 for turnover, can you explain, to have the car turnover for patrons or customers of that area? It seems like if it's not been a prop, have there been, I guess, issues with lack of turnover of parking spaces there?
Yeah, they're having the entire area, the employees...
But I'm talking about Area 9. Talking about Area 9.
Yeah, I include that with the entire area. Is there, we call it the scrub effect. You're seeing scrubs, not, employees of medical facilities, both a hospital and non-hospital medical facilities, parking in these areas for eight hours at a time.
Okay. Now, if we were to look at maybe limiting the scope of which these, whatever, three-hour park, four-hour parking would be, to perhaps 6, 7, 8, and 9, then the unintended consequence of that is that the scrub parking would happen further west? Is that kind of the theory?
Yeah, the balloon effect. It would push the balloon out in a different direction.
And then 2 and 3 are just basically off-limits, right? Whereas there's no changes?
Right. 2 and 3 are already protected by the residential permit parking program that we've had in place for years.
I guess, I guess it's, it's kind of, you know, I'm struggling with this, because I understand there is, from, from perception of staff, a problem, and it sounds like from, from members of the community, the, the small businesses, you know, it isn't a problem. It's somehow working in equilibrium. It balances out. So I think it's kind of unfortunate that this comes up in Small Business Saturdays coming up, and this may potentially hurt small business. So I'm struggling with this one. I, you know, as I think the former council member, Graham Mihayev, talked about, when we talked about parking meters, it wasn't really to address this issue, it was to address the revenue issue, right? That's, and we talked about that, right? The parking meters as a way to raise revenue. And then we were looking at possibly, on Catalina, Area 9 is that first, one of the first phases of that. So I don't know how, I guess I'll wait and hear what the questions might come up from the council members, but it's going to be a tough one, I think, so anyways. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Shall I?
Just a couple of questions. So the, if we approve this, it'll be from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM globally?
Correct.
So in Areas 1 and 2, and 4 and 5, if somebody's parked there, say, at 3:10, they're fine for the rest of the evening? Because if it's a three-hour, 6 o'clock? Correct.
Give me that time again, that you gave me.
If they park there at 3:10?
Yeah.
They're, so, so any parking after 3:00 is basically, they're good for the rest of the evening?
Correct. If you park at 3:01?
Right.
And you're parked there at 6:00, you have not violated the parking regulation in the three-hour parking zone.
Right, okay.
You can stay till 6, 7, 8, 9, 10.
Okay. And then also on the residential in Areas 2 and 3, and I wasn't around when they originally did that for permit parking, but would it be feasible even to entertain? I know that came about because residents were coming home and they had no place to park. And I don't know what it looks like during the day. I've been there a couple of times, and it seems pretty empty, because most people work during the day. Would that be possible to entertain, looking at opening that up during the day for employees to park there, during business hours type thing?
Yeah, it's...
I'm just trying to be a little creative.
Yeah, it's worthy going through the process of taking a look at that. We haven't looked at it yet, from that aspect.
It does seem very underutilized, since there, it's pretty empty, and we mainly wanted to make sure that residents had places to park.
The width of those streets allow for a lot of different configurations that could occur.
But that is something we could, okay. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Dean?
There's a couple of things that I would like to clarify for our former colleague, regarding the traffic, the parking meters. They're not on, they're not on the scope at this particular point. They could go in down the road. What was agreed upon was to hire some code enforcement or some parking enforcement people, and start to enforce. When I was on the Traffic Commission, and your husband's on the Traffic Commission, putting in a two-hour parking was almost a joke, because it was never possible to enforce it. Now we're enforcing it. And part of this process that has been explained to me from staff, is that we're going to try this for 90 days, and see how it works from the standpoint of moving cars around. The city streets, and my wife would love to have spaces out front of our house on the street that are dedicated to us, it doesn't happen. They're public, they're for use by the public. So when someone parks a car in a public spot for long periods of time, it's basically being subsidized by the taxpayer. And so the purpose of doing this was to cause traffic flow to occur. There's no question that the area where you work, and a number of the areas downtown, the veterinary clinic and so on, have done things one way for many years, and are comfortable doing it that way. It has impacts for others that are trying to utilize in the area. And the intent of this action tonight is to set a formalized program to be able to evaluate it, and come back in 90 days and evaluate it again. And at that point, the signs may come down. They may be extended. Frankly, I, I've talked to staff, I'm not in favor of the three-hour. They say that's to accommodate the businesses. And so, am I at a two-hour, a three-hour, a four-hour at one of the parks, and then, and there's a section on Cotella that's 24 minutes? And that works fine for those businesses as well. Those businesses have changed ownership over the years the same way. So I'm not sure why we're deviating in some of those processes. I'm, I'm in favor at this particular point of trying this, and see how it works out, and get feedback from both the businesses, customers, people that utilize the area, because there are situations where we have people parking. This, this plan goes all the way up to Catalina, and most everything when I was on Traffic Commission on Los Al Boulevard, was changed to two-hour parking, because the high school kids were parking in front of businesses, and nobody was able to, customer-wise, get in and out of there. So we put 24, or two-hour parking, and there are green curbs in there, but again, nobody was out there to be able to enforce it. Now they will be, and will get a better feel from the standpoint. I think the parking meter aspect is kind of more of a last resort than anything else in the process of doing that. There's fees and costs, buying the equipment that's going to be involved. So I like the approach that we're trying to do, to test it and see where we, where we go. It's not a perfect plan. There's some areas along Cotella that I can see where, where we potentially are going to have some problems. But until we try it, we're not going to know. And, and as an example, we're going to put into our parking that entire stretch from Bloomfield West, in front of the convalescent hospital and the long-term care. That means if somebody's going to park there to go visit somebody inside, they've got a two-hour period. There is a parking lot available to them back behind the facility, but the facility's never really publicized that for people. I've gotten a parking ticket recently in LA, and it ain't cheap, especially up there. I think we want to do the right thing for the businesses, the right thing for the customers and the process, and I, and I'd like to believe that, that taking this step is doing that. We'll know in 90 days, because they're going to do another study. So that's, you know, roughly three months, and we should have an idea at that point, and it won't kick off until January. I, I totally hear what you and your, your other businesses around there are saying. One of the things that does concern me was the one business owner who said he was never notified. You know, I think staff has gone to great lengths to try and reach out to a lot of the businesses. I hear what you said about the people that spoke at the Traffic Commission. I would ask staff to kind of respond back from the Traffic Commission, was there an agreement to notify people that spoke at that meeting? Did we gather emails to be able to do that or not? If we didn't, then they were left with an impression relative to coming to this particular meeting tonight. And, and I don't know if there's, you said that we're going to put the signs up, and cover them, and do some public information work, basically, and then uncover them in January, and start at that particular point. I hate to see us doing things. It's impossible sometimes to get to everybody, as I'm sure you remember. And, and I, I don't like being told that there's been outreach, when in fact, there hasn't been. But there's always two sides to that window. And there was a, a large crowd, as I recall from looking at the minutes, when this was discussed at the Traffic Commission. So this is really like the second cut at that, and I think we've had some discussions before on, in public here regarding that. So, you know, short of knocking on every door and saying, "Did you know?", I don't know how else we, we communicate any better than what we're, what we're trying to do at this point. As I said, I'm, I'm more in favor at this particular point to let this thing go forward as a trial, and evaluate. We can certainly anticipate we're going to get phone calls and emails, and we'll know by the end of that 90 days whether it's working or it's not. And we'll also have some statistics, I assume, from the Police Department in terms of the amount of citations that have been issued during that period of time. What is the cost for a parking citation?
Forty-two, I think?
Forty.
Forty.
Forty dollars? It's about half of what it is in Los Angeles. So, yeah, I, I think that's my observations at this particular point, Mayor.
Thank you.
So I've got a couple of questions. The business owner, I know all the stylists that came up, but the actual owner of the business, what is your hours of operation?
Of the whole salon?
Yeah.
Oh, if you start at 7:00 in the morning, and go till 9:00 at night, everybody's different in there.
Okay. Are you guys open on Sunday?
No.
Okay. Because I, I noticed where Councilmember Hasselbrink was going. She was looking at really how restrictive it is, and their restraints, where it was not enforced on Sunday, it doesn't appear, it doesn't help them.
It's not enforced on Saturdays either.
Oh, okay.
It's Monday through Friday.
Okay. Yeah, I was just looking at the map, I only see Sunday. And then I was just wondering, from 3:00 on, if you get a lot of business after that? I guess, you know, as a business owner, I, I have sympathy for that, too, and like to try to find a way through that. I'm just kind of curious, though, there's a lot of business owners, and probably just asking this generically. Stephen, when a company, or, you know, you know, somebody comes in and starts a business like this, what are the required parking limitations that you have to have to be able to set up an operation? Just, because I think we should know the starting point before we figure out, because, you know, Warren made a pretty strong statement, hey, small business day is coming up, and here we are, screwed with the small businesses. So I'd want to talk a little bit about the shops, and what, what is the parking requirement? So it sounds like a very labor-intensive business. There's a detective, there's a small companies that probably have nobody coming in during the day, and then there's something like this. What would be the number of required parks to set this up?
One per 250 square feet would be, if you built it today, it'd be one per 250 square feet.
Okay.
Non-restaurant, restaurant has a different category. There are no restaurants... There are no restaurants in that, that one. And salons don't have a different category. So it'd be one per 250.
Okay. And approximately that space, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but is it?
About 1,600.
1,600. So four or five parking spaces would be required?
Correct.
And, and then the intention of our planning code and our parking regulations is that to be used to have enough for employee parking, customer parking, or both?
Both, all parking.
So really four versus 13 before they even open the door?
Yeah.
Okay. And then when you guys went through the process to be able to do this, I guess the assumption is the street parking there was going to be your main overflow, obviously, going through that. So I, I don't know. I, you know, like Dean, I, I want to support this the way it stands. I kind of liked some of the stuff that, you know, Shelley was saying that, hey, could we get creative, especially looking at the residential area? You know, I live in a, in a tract of homes that has a permit parking because of the high school. And it works really good and then pretty soon people just forget about it being a parking place. But, but, you know, there's also, we haven't put the diagonal parks in there, or have we yet already in that area? Do we do diagonal parking in the residential area there?
No, not in that residential area. The only where it is, is on Oak over here.
And so the...
On Cherry though, too.
Ye, on...
Yeah.
Yeah.
On both sides of Cherry.
Yeah, that's right, by the water district as well.
Okay. So we've gotten as much out of the area there mathematically as we can?
Pine and Reagan has opportunities. I wouldn't want to speak for those residents that live there, though.
So Jerry, I mean, it's a little bit of an unfair fight. You know as much as anybody how much complaints we get about traffic and Javier, you too, we've listened to this. I think we're trying to come up with some sort of a solution that we can actually try to, to figure out. I don't think we're trying to take any specific business. But I also believe that when a business is engaged like this, that you have at least a fair seat at the table to influence. The fact that you guys are the only ones here makes me a little concerned about our noticing that we didn't have a fair representation. I'm going to go back with staff and again, in a non-emotional way, just curious, what, what our outreach for this process, because I'm not as familiar and I'm not watching the Traffic Commission in that level of detail, just, just to get an appreciation. I know if we were doing something that affects property owners, we send out notices, but I, I wasn't sure about the business.
All the outreach was done and compiled prior to coming to council. We did it at the Traffic Commission level and they, they actually held the, one of our largest attended outreach meetings we've ever had here with the businesses. And we actually resorted to hand-delivering those flyers to, to getting those out at that stage. Because we're not having a lot of luck with the mail.
Just Stephen, just to clarify, please, for the council meeting, did we send notice to anybody?
No, we did not.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you know, when this item, I'm sorry, when, when the previous item, last meeting came up, we were talking about parking on Oak and I made the statement, hey, why didn't the Traffic Commission handle it? And somebody responded back from staff, it's because parking is the city council's problem. Do you guys remember that? And so I, when I'm going through, I, I guess I had forgot the council, the commission took on the parking in this area, not the council then. Correct.
Well, the commission operated as an outreach avenue for the council on behalf of the council. It wasn't for the commission to chime in at that first meeting. The commission was given the opportunity of hosting a meeting to vet these issues in a public manner with businesses, tenants, property owners, all at the table. And that, it wasn't because it was required of them to review it before it came to council. We asked them to provide that open house town hall venue.
I guess the only comment I would leave with is that if there was, you know, it sounded like through the comment from the folks that work over there that there was a view of if the time was extended, a certain amount of time, they might be able to have limitations as long as there was a little bit of flexibility. I, I don't remember, was, was that a statement then that you were talking about that you entertained as something that was doable?
Actually, what we were saying is with regards to doing business.
Yeah.
If we had four hours, that would work a lot better for us. You probably don't know anything about this, but if you come in for a fella and a guy and a man turn a couple here, that's four hours.
Okay.
If somebody wants a little bit late either way, you're dinked. You get a ticket. And that's our concern is, like I said, when we had this Southern California Edison doing work over there, he created nothing but problems. Like, I'm afraid that that's what's going to happen with this restriction. You guys have all the power in the world to do what you want to, but we're just saying we've already lived it. We found a way to coexist with the other businesses around us and this just seems like a problem. We don't need to stir up.
So again, I think, just trying to find a middle ground up here, the, the four hours might be a middle ground specifically in this one area only because, and I hate doing this, but I think when people come in and try to influence this versus other areas, that this is either an over-representation of one area or through the process in the commissions, this was vetted and everybody else was okay with everything here. But I, I don't know. I think, I, I got to be honest, Jerry, I am completely supportive of this parking strategy of trying to use the streets to let customers come through, but I see the math problem for you guys. I, I honestly, longer term, whether it's the short term or longer term, and maybe this is the bridge, we can try to find a middle ground up here, but I really want to, you know, I'm, I'm probably, and I'm, look, I'm involved with these charities too and they don't like this either. But, but I think policy-wise, this is the right thing to do longer term. I, I don't know if that's going to help you. And even if we were to find a short-term bridge, do the evaluation in 60 to 90 days, I, I'm, you know, could end up going the other way. But I don't know, I guess I would, yeah.
After the council addresses all their questions, will you allow us to bring this back up on your side?
No. That's not normally done.
Anybody who hasn't spoken yet on this issue, you could allow to speak.
Okay. Mayor, I think that's all the questions and points I wanted to make. Thank you.
We're going to take a 10-minute break to allow some to make a graceful exit and be back at 7:10, please. Oh, there he is. So it's my turn. I apologize, my questions are going to be all over the place as we try to sort this out. But first of all, Brett or Stephen, did we, have we met with Ashani and discussed this issue with him? Is there any coordination going on there?
Yeah, we met with, he was one of our first outreach persons. And if you remember early on with the Traffic Commission, something the Traffic Commission I did, think did in January or February, he actually went to them asking for, I think, two-hour parking around his whole facility in our public streets.
Okay. And we've also met with the hospital. What are their feelings on all this?
They're supportive of, of us regulating parking in the area and they want to be a partner in it. They don't necessarily want to free up their parking for non-hospital visitors.
Yeah.
There's a perception out there that the hospital has extra parking, they have extra parking because it was legally required for the phase of construction that they were in. So they're head of the game for the first time in their existence.
Okay.
And they're still trying to get their own employees to abide by it. Some of their employees have been discouraged of going to the top two floors to park, so they're working on a solution to bring them down a little bit further on one of our latest meetings we had with Kent.
And, and Trent can live with what we're proposing?
Ken, Trent's not happy with it. They think it takes most of the, it takes the most appealing spots, parking spots out of their circulation.
Okay. You know, I just have this mental picture that basically we're going to upset everybody, Brett, could you explain to me on, if we, if we don't do this, what happens to the meters? Could you, let me continue one second. You brought up the excellent point that even though everybody's convinced there's a huge parking problem, our survey actually showed that meters might not be supportable. Is that correct? You kind of looked at it from the other side.
Well, no, we just wanted to, from a conservative standpoint, since we are doing additional enforcement now and then the council has directed us to go forward with phasing. And if, if you approve phasing, that's the next step. We go back and take a look at it. The recommendation from the working group as we looked at it was to review it to make sure that the occupancy levels are still going to be high enough to support the capital investment in the parking meters. So that's part of the, and now we're talking about doing two different additional one-day analysis over a 90-day period. So if we're comfortable that the occupancy level is in there, then that would support financing those meters. That would support that the revenue, long-term revenue would pay for that capital cost.
So this really isn't a step towards that?
This is a step towards that.
And without this step, is there any chance to get meters?
If the council directed it that way, we'd skip the step. The recommendation from the working group was to do this step as an interim in between.
Okay. Now, one of the people who's been very active in the parking discussion, wasn't able to be here tonight, she's convinced that our problem is like the doctor's office on Florista and Cherry, the charges for parking, which of course then pushes people out onto the streets and down the street to save the money. It's a pretty, you know, expected result. Could you discuss, or Stephen, about the, when, what are their responsibilities as a business? Were they zoned, when they built their building, did they have to provide free, some free parking? Have they overstepped what they're doing or, or are they in the right?
I think, and Stephen will have to complete the answer, I think, but when they initially would apply for the business license and depending on the size of the business and the requirement for parking at that time, they would have had enough, had to have had enough parking for the size of that building. In terms of monitoring it from a paylot or, or free, I think it's the private property owner that determines that. But Stephen, any additional?
Yeah, there's no law in our code that says parking has to be free onsite. It just has to say that it has to be onsite.
Okay. So if you have to provide 10 spaces, you can charge for those 10 spaces?
Yeah.
Okay. Kind of is unfair to everybody else in the neighborhood, though, that they're making money and then pushing their problem onto everybody else. Dean, go ahead.
I was going to say, that's kind of a hard, hard comment because like in the shopping center that they're talking about, there's a couple of businesses in there, the key business, for example, that was, I, I assume they're still there, I don't know if they are. But I mean, you're in and out of there in 10 minutes for the most part. So, you know, I think what we're, we're having a problem here is, is that when you build a residence, you're required to provide so many parking sites onsite. When a lot of these businesses were built, cars and parking wasn't as much of an issue as it is today. And so you've got a building that's built, and there's a lot of them around here, that is now third, fourth, fifth generation occupants in that process and they're stuck with the same configurations. You know, the, the medical offices that are over on Reagan and, and the one there at the corner on Cherry that has that underground parking, part of that was, was physicians. I can remember issues that occurred when Dr. Chang wanted to build his dental office down on Cotella. And he had it in his program to build underground parking and something happened and it didn't occur. And so now his people were parking on the street. And when there were some changes along that parking, they actually started going across the street to Cottonwood. You know, you've got, you've got staff, which is one problem, and then you've got your customer, which is another. And you look at the great big centers like the Los Rito Center and Lakewood and some of those others, they make their employees park off-site and they run shuttles to bring them in during holidays. They want the parking for people. And I think we've all just gotten into the belief that we're entitled to parking and there's only so much space. So who, who's the key guy that's going to get it? And where this particular study is talking about is the public-provided parking area that's out along the curb.
Okay, thank you. So Brett, we get to the end of 90 days and this doesn't work. Let's say Mrs. Campaner is right. And how do we go about unraveling this? How long does that take?
Well, I think we can give feedback back to the city council based on the, the study that we show. So if we're doing, Stephen, can you go through the timeline? And I think Councilwoman Hasselbrink had brought this up at the last meeting, the time, estimated timeline for implementation if we go forward with it and when we can give the council feedback into the process.
The adoption of the resolution would be tonight. We would order the signs beginning tomorrow. We would install those signs on December 17th. It'll take about 30 days to do the whole area, probably a little less, keeping the holidays. But as we install them, we put bags over them so people don't think they're enforced yet because they have, all have to be enforced on the same day, starting the same time, which we're recommending them to be effective, enforcement effective on January 4th. 90 days after January 4th, which is beginning of April, would be that 90-day parking study that started, study would mimic the previous parking study. And then we, you would have a before and an after picture of parking in each one of these areas, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. You're going to see places where it worked, some places where it won't work, some place where it may tweak. But most of all, you'll see the percentages of spaces that we think are available and would be for paid parking. It would give us the confidence available to go towards parking meters if we thought there was a customer base for parking meters. If everyone, if the problem gets fixed with this, there won't be a customer base for parking meters.
Okay, thank you. Were there any other objections besides the people who came tonight? Any other businesses have lodged objections to this plan?
There were businesses that objected to parking meters, but there were a number of the businesses that were in attendance, restaurateurs mostly, who were in favor of the parking limits.
Okay, thank you. What would it take to investigate the residential permit parking, the reverse of that, the day, during the day parking by permit? And how long would that take?
In terms of what Councilwoman Hasselbrink brought up, the explorer putting spaces into that area?
Yes, when you get to speak first, you get to take all the good ideas.
We would, I think we would have to do our own outreach on that and, and determine that. I'm not sure timeline-wise, how long we can put that together.
Unwind that?
Not unwind, no. Explorer, you're talking about exploring the possibility of using some spaces?
During the day, yeah. The reverse of what's there now, have a different set of permits for people to come during the day.
I think it would take, it would take some time to do the outreach to the property owners in the area to make sure that the residential parking, because what you're doing is unwinding the fact that residential permit parking only is in the area. We would open up during the day for business customers.
Or, or, or business owner permit parking. You know, it, it could go several ways, but it...
If I can ask a question on that. So, so on the, and, and this is going to be a very, very difficult subject because I, I lived through this on the other side with residential parking. But what part of that residential parking is not public? It's all public, right? The residential permit parking? It's public street.
It's public to the people who...
Much, much as all the other areas, the green area and Area 9, it's, it's public, right? I mean, so the yellow, the, the yellow area is public parking as well?
It's publicly owned, yeah.
Right. Well, yeah, publicly owned. Public parking is as much as anything. When this came up before in the area over there, I want to see what an area that town is it? That John somebody, Necro, whatever his...
Nekelsommer.
Nekelsommer, yeah. He wanted to do the same thing. And I'll tell you, the Traffic Commission was full of neighbors that were so against that with, with vengeance. So I, it'll be a very interesting question to, to ask. But, but it just seems to me, it's somewhat really ironic that, that we're going to say, you know, all these are public parking and then that's not public parking for usage. So I think we're getting on to, I'll say, thin ice on that one. So it'll be real interesting. I, I would hope it'd be something that could be worked out in terms of permitted. But, but on the other hand, it, it puts the burden on the police who issue the permits. Then how do they vet out who gets the permit and who doesn't? So I, you know, I, I would like to see that before we move forward, that we get that studied and perhaps include that in this, in the solution going forward. Because I think if we kind of do it piecemeal, it's just going to be not well-executed and like I think the mayor said, we're going to probably cause a lot of other folks to be angry. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, on the, with the permit, I wasn't necessarily looking for physical permits during the day, but unpermitting it during the day and then permit parking's enforced from 5:00 PM on or something like that. So it would be undoing something as opposed to passing out more permits of different colors, that type of thing. So I think that implementation would be a little easier.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
But timing-wise, Stephen, do you think we could tie that in? We can do the outreach analysis and bring back, feedback to the council about the 90-day period?
Yeah, within that same period, that's feasible.
That's approximately April then? Because if we do January, January is when it starts at the, in terms of the time limits and the, taking the bags off the signs and then 90 days after that?
It would be feasible to iron out all the... It would be feasible to iron out all the issues related to the, to the, that area within 90 days, yes.
Okay, thank you. You know, it looks like we're trying to do is make it easier to shop in Los Alamos. That's the base goal, is that fair?
I mean, traffic circulation to improve that possibility, yes.
So, I, I don't understand why on the Pine Street lot, then, we're not gonna either make that short-term, two- or three-hour parking, or business owner park, you know, it just seems like leaving it up for area employees, that's part of it, you know, the hospital, that's a problem we've gotta solve with the hospital. When I spoke before the Chamber of Commerce, I was hoping the Chamber would take the lead on this and come to an agreement between the businesses, because when it comes up here, unfortunately, we're picking winners and losers, and, you know, as, as we've discussed, I'm not sure we're just moving people around today, you know, it's, we'll find out, but it, I'm, so I guess I'm objecting to the Pine Street lot. I think we could use it either as to get people into the shopping centers for four hours, or if we want, if we decide that the best use is permit parking, then, then figure out who, you know, maybe business owners are getting permits, but to just have no time limitations, doesn't seem, that's prime property, doesn't seem we're using it to its maximum, to me. Any, anybody else?
No, there's, there are time limitations on Pine, for the proposed.
No, Pine Street lot, the black spot?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it, that was, it just, it just struck me, if we're not following through with a property that's like right off the shopping center, that's really, that's as prime as you get without being, you know, in, in the Hofshut lot, and like the Campaneras, I, I work there, so I, I fight for a spot every day, you know, and as, as Mrs. Campanera said, hope, you know, spots do open up, they're not, you might not get the most convenient one every day, but eventually, you know, you find something, you might drive around once or twice, and.
Mayor, what's, what was Afshani's plan for the parking lot that he is, because that's one that's not talked about from the standpoint of the permits, and it's one that we won't be enforcing, because it's private property. Is he planning to follow suit with two-hour parking? I know he's put up parking restrictions, but it's not really enforceable, short of him coming out with a tow truck and towing cars off, because people can't be issued citations because it's private property, but there ought to be some consistency in what he's doing with that lot as to what we do with the, with the city lot.
Well, Afshani was trying to discourage non-users of his property from parking there by placing that, the dollar stuffing board on there and putting up signage. He was trying to discourage offsite people from using his property, and one way to do that is to charge for parking, so he painted numbers on all the spaces, and, and, and then tried to discourage people from parking there. He's since taken those down because of lack of, his ability to enforce, and I think he got some feedback from some of the tenants in there as well, that it wasn't working. The, the vision is that the long-term employees for Afshani's property go to that back space, that back spot of 75 spaces, there's 75 spaces on that lot, and then his other tenants, or his other customers would use the onsite parking as well, and free our parking spaces up on the street.
Right.
So, that's what we're hoping with these solutions, is that the short-term option becomes the city spots, or what we call the offsite spots. There's no reduction of the number of spaces in the area by any action the council takes tonight. We're not reducing the number of parking spaces in the area. We're not taking parking spaces away from people. We're simply regulating for circulation, so those spaces, but, but the same number of spaces will exist today as it did yesterday, and as far as the people that have the inability of walking far, people with handicap placards are exempt from these parking standards. So I think that helps mitigate one of the issues that the salon may be concerned with.
One other question that was brought up when you were asked about the timetable, which shows up on page 8 of 9 of the staff report, about the signs being installed and bagged on the 17th between, the 30-day period between tomorrow and the 17th of December. What happens to the two-hour parking that already exists on these streets if you're putting up new posting? Does that mean that enforcement of the two-hour parking as it exists goes away?
No, it's still enforceable. We're not gonna, we will not be bagging those signs. The existing signs, we will not bag and...
So we're putting up new signs?
Yeah.
Then what happens to the existing two-hour signs?
We will take those down, once these are effective.
On the same poles, or we're, we're moving poles?
New poles, yeah. They're pretty tattered, they're pretty faded, all the old signs and old poles are not reusable. Our estimates that we provided for the, the cost under $2,000 includes new poles.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna reopen it up for public comment. Three minutes?
And go. A couple of responses to things that were said. Stephen, you said that the handicap people can park anywhere, and I agree with that, that's what allotted, but we had a client that parked in a spot that was a specific time in our parking lot, and the police were called, and the police told them, "We can tow you away, you can fight it, but you have to go to court to do that," so that's not correct information. That's, that's what the PD told us, so we're going by what is being given to us by the city.
But the city is not regulating onsite parking, we're regulating offsite parking. My, my comment was that state law allows for public parking spaces if you had a handicap, not private spaces. I didn't say the sites on your, the spaces on your site.
I'm just saying, it can cause problems because people don't know the law, and when the police came out and did respond, that was not the information we were given, unlike a little extra time added to take up the time that we were discussing back and forth. Really what's happening here is you're taking the same amount of spaces and the same amount of people, and you're just moving them around, and it's just a big, huge inconvenience. I appreciate that you are entertaining the idea of the four-hour enforcement. What I'd like to ask is, Councilmember Hasselbrink brought up the opening and allowing everyone to park on that street, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just would, I would just caution you, I think the people would be more angry about that, because then anyone can park there, as opposed to if permits were just given to, you know, the business people, it would reduce the amount of parking during the day, but however you choose to go, I'm just trying to head it off at the pass, so you guys don't have to take a hit for that. Also, if you were to limit us and give us permits, if you're going to say the parking that is along Los Almidos Boulevard, or on Florista, is till 6 o'clock, then maybe we could match the parking permits on the residential to the hours on the city streets that are considered city parking, so that that way, as soon as we're no longer allowed to park in the residential, we can park in those spots, because it's at the same timeframe. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. This problem started with Medical Center, it can end with Medical Center. What happens is if you look at the site here, for the eight years I was on the council, we had nothing but problems with Medical Center people parking and other people, business parking. So, they shift over to here, and then that shifts people over a little bit further. We don't even see the impact, that's too far for people, for those medical offices or the hospital to walk, so I would disagree with the statement that was made earlier. We don't have a parking problem where we're at. But if you were to say to the hospital, "Let's work in tandem, let's make sure that your people are parking in the structure, bring your parking card from the parking structure every morning, have it signed off," and then that way you know that they're utilizing their spaces. Another thing is the traffic commission asked for enforcement of the existing situations that we have now as far as time limits. That was only done for a couple of weeks, I don't see how you could have any measurable kind of standard based on that few weeks of enforcement. I'm just curious as to why this is being pushed so fast, you know, when I was on the council, I tried to get speed bumps in the alleys, and that was a safety issue. This is like moving quicker than anything I've ever seen, so I'm not really sure what the purpose for the speed of it is. I would like to ask that we slow this process down. We would have to request from the people that I work with, that if we're going to have these restrictions put in place, that we're allowed to have somewhere to park at the same amount of time. If you implement the parking restrictions and there's no provision for us, we won't be able to do business, there'll be nowhere for us to park. And Councilmember Hasselbrink brought up a good, a good item, you know, if we park there at 3:10, then we're safe, because it ends at 6:00. The only problem is that we book our schedule on the hour, generally speaking, and so if they get there just right on time, then they're potentially going to get a ticket from being there too long. Most people will get there and wait for a couple of minutes, so again, you have this flex of about 10, 15 minutes where they would still be at risk. If these people start getting parking permit tickets, that's gonna kill our business. We've sent several cards in, that we had people fill out, stating that they're not capable of walking from the street to the salon, and I will be quite frank with you, come by sometime to our shop. These ladies are so elderly that they can barely get from the door to the car safely, so the option of having us park in that lot, it just doesn't work for us. You know, I, I just wanted to say one last thing, that the Cherry Street and Florista facility, I've gone to the doctor there for many years, that parking lot's always full, the street parking's always full, I don't think they're at fault for anything other than doing good business, and I think that's where a lot of us are finding ourselves, is we've outgrown what the structures were put in place many years ago. So, I don't know what the answers are, but again, we're gonna ask that you don't go with the parking restriction, I think you're just moving the problem around. If you do, if we could have that four-hour parking, that would be very, very advantageous for us, and if you put these poles in with the new signs, that's a lot of money, guys. Are you really gonna go back on it after that? I doubt that very seriously. So, instead of doing it for 90 days, what if we did it for 30 days? Do you not think that if people are gonna be angry, they're not gonna be angry within that first 30 days? You could put up temporary signs that aren't gonna cost you hardly anything. You get a read for what the mood is in the environment where we're working and the people are living. I, I just think that it's moving too quickly, there aren't provisions for everything, and once the money's spent, I'm afraid we'll never go back. Even if it's not good for us, that's just not gonna be an option. So, just like to ask you to please consider those things before your decision tonight. And thank you all so much for meeting with me and giving us the opportunity to be heard. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council Javier Mejia. I do have some insight into this, as I sit on the traffic commission, but I am here speaking on my own behalf. I am a little dismayed to find out tonight that parking does not fall under the purview of the traffic commission. This is the first I've heard of this. We've discussed parking at nausea in our meetings, and that seems like an absolute waste of time at this moment. With regards to some of the issues that are before us tonight with the parking, I think there's a lot of confusion in the entire area. We've had some change with the hospital and the parking lot that's gone in. We have a lot that is, the Plaza Parking Lot, which has gone from an open lot to a paid lot, to currently, it looks like an open lot, the signs have been removed, but for a while, not far back, there were signage that you were gonna get towed, so a lot of people, "I would not park there." I didn't see in the fine print that it said 90 minutes free, or whatever. The owner of that property had come forward and discussed it, and he was going to be, last I heard, was going to be putting up new signage, so where he stands on that, I don't know, but I think that adds to the confusion, whether that's open for parking or not. The curbside parking adjacent to that also is painted, "Los Alamos Plaza," okay? That is city parking, not plaza parking, that adds to the confusion, okay? Does anybody recall when the CIF building was purchased, when it went in, after the post office moved? Okay? That's been some time. The entire curb face in front of that building is green since the post office was there, it's never been removed. There's more confusion, more parking, small little pieces of parking that could add to solutions. We already have heard from business license holders here in Los Alamos, unfortunately there aren't more, that are saying that it's working. I think it would work better if we just clean up what we have, enforce the parking that we already have, because we all know that parking has not been enforced in this city, for the most part, for a long time. If we don't enforce it, we don't have a true idea of really what's going on, and I know we've just started doing that, but, but that might have fixed it already, and we don't know what's going on. We've got people, I'm sure in the hospital, that have, they know, I know, the, look at Los Alamos, the park.
Laurel?
Laurel Park. Had a big parking problem there, because everybody was using it for the elementary school, and then when the hospital was building their lot, it was full with the, the scrub effect, correct? We put up some signs, and, you know, that's kind of, now that the hospital's parking is done, that problem has kind of gone away, but the signs are up, and I, as far as I know, they're still missing the actual resolution number that says what, they weren't, they're not complete. So we have a lot of incomplete information for our patrons and business owners out there, and I think if we just clean up what we have, we might have, you know, a better working environment for, for all. I think you're gonna drive away a lot of businesses, you're gonna drive away a lot of customers, and that's just, that's just my feel on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your service on the commission.
You know, one thing, one thing comes to mind, because it, the 90-day window here, trying to figure out, and I, and I think back to the bridge, the Seal Beach Bridge, it went down to two lanes, actually, I think it was three lanes, but the middle lane was emergency, and everybody said, "Oh, we'll never get where we've gotta go, and it's gonna be a problem," and people found ways around it. I think using this, using this option for the 90 days, and, and I don't think 30 is gonna be fair enough at this particular point, because I think it's gonna take the 90 days to, to really figure out what's gonna happen. Are our employees gonna work things out and go out and make changes every two hours or three hours in the process? That's something we don't know. So I, I, I think the 90 days is, is probably the right timeframe, by April, to kind of get an idea of whether this is working or not, and, and the feedback in the process, and, you know, I, I just hope that the businesses can work things out in the process. I'm a little disenchanted that some of them didn't get notified in advance of this, but there's, there's apparently gonna be 60 days at this particular point that, and not quite 60 days, that they can start to figure out adjustments in what they're going to do, so. From what I'm hearing, there's nothing at this particular point we're gonna be able to do with areas 2 and 3, other than get a report back at the 90 days. Am I correct on that?
That's where we're headed right now, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, based on, on where we are at this particular point, and the desire to try and, and get this thing started, I'd like to move the recommended action by staff, and I'll just leave it at that, see if we get a second.
Thank you. Just for housekeeping, public comment, is, anybody else? No.
Only that we may not make it 90 days, because that's a long period of time, we may not make it.
Okay. Thank you. Any second to Dean's motion?
I'll second his motion, for the sake of discussion.
Okay.
Then I'd like to offer a substitute motion, that the motion would be delay the recommended action to give staff a chance to reach out to the residents in the zones identified up in the screen as 2 and 3, to see if there is any possibility of relaxing the permit parking for the daytime hours, and then bring that back as a consolidated report, that we'd have one solution, instead of trying to piecemeal this. That'd be my motion, substitute motion.
I will second it. Carrie, who votes first now? More discussion? Any more discussion?
Vote on the substitute motion, see.
Okay. So all in favor of warrant, substitute motion?
Aye.
Aye. Three? No?
No.
Two? 3-2. Passes 3-2.
Can I, can I ask just for, when, how long are we delaying it for? I probably should have asked that before.
I was...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Is two months enough, Brett? Is two months enough, Brett?
Stephen, what do you think? Reach out and feedback and back to council?
Holidays are tough, but we could certainly, we can certainly notify every apartment building owner. Whether we get the feedback on the first round may be problematic, but we'll make two attempts of getting to each property owner in two and three. And we can do that, probably letter one in a week and letter two in a week after that.
Well, just whatever, just tell us what's practical.
January.
Okay, so two months?
Yeah.
Mayor, can I ask one more question? I'm sorry. So when we get the information back, is that going to come back to council? Because, you know, what I have a feeling is, nobody likes people parking in front of their house. So if, you know, what latitude are we going to use with this information?
Well, I think Jerry made a point. I mean, I'll tell you, in my neighborhood, when this permit thing, I mean, it's going to, it's going to create quite an impact. And with businesses, then we start getting into, and I remember, we've had a lot of debates up here, then you start getting into who are the voters versus who are the business owners. And then the voters, you know, definitely will exert their right, as the business owners do, but in a very loud way. So I, you know, just be prepared for, I think, this thing coming back. And the thing that I was thinking about when we were on the 10-minute, 20-minute break was that when we were going through this process, there was a lot of stuff that we asked the Traffic Commission to do, because I had asked staff and said, you know, you know, Javier got up and said, hey, I didn't realize I was wasting my time on the Traffic Commission. Well, I remember, you know, we did go back and have the Traffic Commission come and do that, the heavy lifting on this issue. And part of the reason we did that is because, you know, it was the meat grinder. They, they, they had a huge outcome. And so what's happening is, we're going to reopen this again, and it's, and it's going to start here, but it'll probably spread throughout the entire solution. So it just really is a situation, I'm starting to think through, is what is the potential impact? Once we open this thing up, we're going to spend the next six months to nine months working to redo this, what we kind of handed the Traffic Commission to do. So I think that's the impact. I think that's what we're looking at.
Do we, Stephen, do we need any additional feedback or direction on the actual reach out to the residential community? Because there's a process for establishing the residential permit in the first place, which is somewhat cumbersome. And once it's established, do we have to go back and look at modifying that entire program for the one, the two different regions of two and three?
Let me look. I've done research before on how to eliminate a residential parking permit, because now that cottonwood doesn't have the impact that it did, I don't remember my research, though, offhand. Don't recall it offhand.
If I may, though, in my experience, I think it was handled by the Traffic Commission. And then it may have been then escalated up to the council. But the process, I know when we deliberated as a commissioner, it was done locally. We had gone through this, so. We didn't implement any, but we did look at that one area, carrier row area, about, you know, some, some, one street, some, like, six parking, you know, spots. I think, Stephen, you're going to have, I think, a fairly quick feedback. I think it's going to be the way that Troy says, and we'll see what it is. But I'd like to know the answer to that before we would move forward on that. So I don't expect it'll, people won't want to give up that street parking, even during the day and no one else is using it. That's kind of the human nature, but we'll see, we'll see if there is some ability to at least share that.
Is, is it also possible to explore diagonal parking with those streets to add more spots?
Well, without letting commercial, commercial customers or employees parking in there, you wouldn't need to add the spots. There's not a lack of parking in that area.
Right, but if, I'm just trying to explore all options, so we have all our information available to us.
I think, I think the width is there, much like it was at Oak. I'm not, I would question whether you could do parallel on both sides. I'm pretty sure you can do it on one side, just by moving the center line of the street.
Just so we have all the information, so if it does come back and we want to, you know, unpermit this during the day, we can add additional spots, just so we have everything so we're not.
Oh, good, yeah, good idea.
Final comment. Could you get with Javier and get his ideas on where these, you know, other spaces that we maybe could be utilizing? You know, find out, get his opinions as to what, what else is there? It's a shame to have underutilized space.
Underutilized space throughout the city?
Yeah, well, in that area. He mentioned several ideas, you know, that we could at least explore, you know, finding a few extra spots would be like gold.
Didn't those come up, though? I mean, in the break, Jerry came up to me and said that they were at that meeting on parking, and.
There, there was probably about 20 people, and there was one gentleman who was supportive, he was a doctor. And I remember talking to the gentleman from La Hora, and he, he didn't have a decision either way. Almost every single person, after I know Teresa Murphy from the Cherry, David Nadler, that there was that additional parking, this little black spot on there. She, no one was supporting it. And it wasn't just the meters, they did not want the time to parking.
So just so I'm clear, what you, what we voted on tonight, I just want to make sure I'm clear. So we're only opening the evaluation of the residential area, bringing that back, and then having another discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I would want to see.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're going to take a shorter 10-minute break this time.
Point of order?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Protem Edgar had pulled item 9A.
Oh. Nobody pays attention to him anymore. Okay, 9A, Brett. Would you like a staff member?
No, I just, I have a, I have a couple requests that I'd like to ask for consideration of the council on page nine of 22. On, again, for the public, this is item 9A, minutes of the city council, just a couple areas of clarification. If you look at the bottom paragraph, Mayor Protem Edgar understood, down where it starts with no questioned, no questioned, or he questioned, I'm sorry, he questions if the city, my point there was that, I, my suggestion is Edgar disagreed that, instead of he questioned, I was actually disagreeing that we should do this. And then if you kind of keep going, parking away from the residents to accommodate parking, and then it was for the facility, but actually, I scratched for the facility, what I was talking about was for high-density residential areas with limited parking. My issue was that the residents that owned there, we were taking parking away from people that have a limited ability at that point. So before I move to the next one, anybody have any questions? Because I'm not trying to do this, you know, too much on the fly. Is everybody okay with those comments? Okay. And then if you go to the next page, Mayor Protem Edgar indicated that he was not supportive of overnight parking. I was, on that one, I was not supporting of the overnight parking limitations. It was, you know, at that point, I was thinking it was okay to do overnight parking, because that's when the residents come home to their apartments, or their, you know, may be their homes, too. So I was just adding the word limitations after parking. And I think that was, oh. And then just a small administrative, page 20 of 22, third paragraph, was not in favor, last sentence was not in favor of having the discussion again unless there are new issues. Just minor administrative. Those are my recommended changes, and I would ask for a motion, a second.
I'll make a motion to change as Stephen.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You want to close it?
No, I'm okay. Thank you.
All right, 9A is done. Onto 10, public hearings. Introducing ordinance 2015-03, zoning ordinance amendment to create a medical overlay zone in compliance with the 2015-20-35 general plan.
As the Development Services Director, Stephen Mendoza, will do the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Within the new general plan, a medical overlay designation was created to be placed on certain industrial properties that wrap around the back of the Los Alamos Medical Center. Within the, because the general plan provide the policy-level framework to do that, then in the next step would be to adopt the zoning, zoning code that reflected that. So it's both a zoning text amendment and also a zoning map amendment, and you have that before you tonight. And the intent of both the Planning Commission and the city council, when they placed it in the general plan, was to capture the expected growth of the medical service industry and allow that place to grow that wouldn't take up valuable commercial property on either Cotella or Los Alm Boulevard. And this ordinance implements that vision. And with that, it is a public hearing. It'd be required to open this as a public hearing, take any public testimony as necessary, and then provide a recommendation.
Thank you. We will now open the public comment. We have two dissenters.
Or two bored people, yeah.
To close the public comment. Any comments from anybody?
I'll move the recommended action.
I'll second.
The title of the ordinance, ordinance number 2015-03, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Los Alamos, California approving zoning ordinance amendment ZOA 15-03 to amend sections 17.04.020, 17.10.020, and 17.12.010 of Los Alamos Municipal Code to create a medical overlay zone and to amend the zoning map to place the medical overlay zone on properties generally north of the Los Alamos Medical Center, specific plan area, which properties are all in the planned light industrial, that is PM, zone of the city. This is city-initiated, and the motion is to waive the reading and introduce ordinance number 2015-03.
City attorney has a point of order. Was this, this is not the item where Councilmember Gross had to recuse himself.
Bye for kidding, I'm the next one, thank you.
Okay, just want to keep you honest, thank you. It's a full-time job.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Onto 10B. So we'll introduce ordinance, Dean, are you going to recuse yourself here?
And this is the one that I need to recuse myself.
Okay. Why?
Oh, because I have property within the overlay area.
Thank you. So we'll introduce ordinance 2015-09, a zoning ordinance amendment to create a retail overlay zone in compliance with the 2015-20-35 general plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As part of the new general plan, a retail overlay use designation was created and placed on Arrowhead's four parcels that add up to 28 acres, and those parcels are on the corner of Lexington and Cotella. Arrowhead is a dynamic aerospace company in Los Alamos. They've been operating in that location for decades and generate high number of jobs and highly-paid jobs, and they continue to build upon their global status. The city supports its continued operation. However, if the company ever decided that Los Alamos no longer fit their needs, we would like the, the general plan establish the goal that that place should, in the event turnover, go to retail. And so the retail overlay is an overlay that makes retail possible, but still has the underlying zoning of industrial, should they want to expand. With that, again, this is a public hearing. It's been vetted through the Planning Commission and through the city council at the general plan level, again, vetted the Planning Commission at the zoning level, and now it goes on to the city council tonight for the city council to host this public hearing before they introduce it for a first reading, and then there would be a second reading 30, about 30 days later, and then it would be effective 30 days after that. Again, it is a public hearing, so public testimony should be permitted, and then with that, there would be a recommendation.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody? Last chance. Shelley?
My name's Shelley Henderson. I'm editor of Orange County Breeze, but I'm speaking in my private capacity. I simply could not resist coming up in and putting in my two cents' worth. If Arrowhead ever does decide to leave and this gets turned into retail slash commercial, are you going to widen Lexington and change the signal so you can cross the street and go south to the JFDB? And that's the end of my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion?
I'll move it to waive reading and by, introduce by title. The city attorney could read the title.
Title is? An ordinance of the city council of the City of Los Alamos, California approving ordinance, ZOA 15-08 to amend section 17.04.020, 17.10.020, and 17.12.010 of the Los Alamos Municipal Code to create a retail overlay zone and to amend the zoning maps, map to place the retail overlay zone over those properties, commonly known as the Arrowhead properties, which properties are all in the planned light industrial PM zone of the city. And this is also city-initiated.
Thank you. All in favor?
I'll second it. And just a point of clarification, Shelley asked the question, so we have the spite signal, so you can't cross over. What mechanically happens, just so that we are not just breezing over the fact that she made the comment and not responding to it? Can we just get a staff reaction to what her comment was?
Well, if the property were to change down the line.
What would be the process?
We'd have to look back into that.
Well, the process would be an environmental document, environmental document would be written based upon the impacts of any development there. And that would seek mitigation measures to mitigate concerns related to the growth of that property or the change of that property, including bringing Lexington to its ultimate width. It certainly would be something that anyone writing an environmental document would take into consideration. And then the legal ramifications, we would explore through the previous settlement agreements of changing the signal.
But, yeah, so we fought that all the way through. So the environmental impact in a situation like that, based on this zoning, we would end up having to go back to Cypress in the same way that they've come to us to change the signals. We would actually want it changed, so we'd make our environmental requirements that we've never really taken in action. You know, we've tried a few times to, to fix that signal. So I'm just trying to be strategic. When we pass something like this with the idea it could be retail for a future agenda, it seems like we should be thinking through the ramifications of if it was retail, the limitations we may have on ourselves. And I'm just curious, directionally, from a sequin and probably a sequela perspective, the ingress egress and the flow from that would probably have us change some traffic patterns there. I don't know specifically if that signal would be affected. I've been a big proponent of trying to fix this at some point, and it's hit every political issue it could have. But I'm just wondering, are we really creating a problem here by changing the zoning to something we may not be able to entertain because we have a limitation traffic-wise?
No, I certainly think that those are things that applicants will have to work on in order to get their project approved. It's not necessarily, the burden's not necessarily on the city to mitigate their concerns. They're going to have to come up with ways to mitigate their traffic.
So it'd be interesting for us, then, to go to Cypress and ask for them to change this, but I'm, okay, thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No?
I'll call Dean back. And I want to thank staff for splitting these things up so we can have Councilmember Gross at least address part of it, so, thank you.
We're just glad to have you a part of it.
Okay, item 11, sober living.
Thank you, Mayor, city council. This item was brought forward at the request of the city council at the last meeting to do a report on sober living home, and we presented a report for your review and discussion tonight. And so we have the Development Services Director, Stephen Mendoza, go through what's included here and try to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you.
Before you go, is there any questions?
I have absolutely brought this, something I was really interested in. I think that, you know, to put this in context, we have this sort of an establishment that's actually now in Rossmore Highlands, and it's something that we've touched on this subject a bit when we evaluated the Senate Bill 1, I think it was, when we actually tried to figure out, we were kind of forced at. tried to figure out—we were kind of forced at the state level as a city to allow a certain part of the zoning to allow this type of facility. And so I—I think, you know, for me, it's really important for the residents of this affected area. This may be the first of many that these maybe pop up. You know, I have relatives that are in areas where these have popped up, one in a neighborhood, and as soon as they pop up, and if it doesn't get a lot of adversity from the city, more look—that more people that do these types of homes look for a place to—to pop these things in, and they really look for bigger homes. So the Rossmore Highlands is a prime place for this type of facility. The more bedrooms you have, the more you can convert it into a bigger area, and depending on what these are going to be—the types of folks that are put in this, some of—there is funding available from the state to actually help augment. Now, this, I'm trying to also make sure, from a council perspective, that when we're out there and this thing ends up being a bigger deal, because right now it's sort of like the tree that fell in the forest and nobody's really making a big deal about it. But pretty soon, when people start realizing what is going on, and then, like I said, I've seen it from the point where it—it—the tree fell, and then it started—it kept falling, and the home prices in that area go down, is that—I—I just want to make sure that the residents of our city realize the council is focused on stuff like this, and we really want to utilize this time to talk about the legal and statutory regulations that are placed on the city and what the limitations are that we can do, and whether consciously we want to take any other actions to do anything else, or whether we legally can take actions. So to me, it's a really important thing. It's something that takes the first step of potentially affecting the home prices in one of our most, you know, fluent areas that we have big homes, and so I—I just want to talk about this in the context. And at the end, just to set expectation, we may not have any really bold conclusion other than this has been a great education, but I'd like a status update on what the city's perspective. And I will also say, in fairness to the city, you've provided us confidential disclosures of details of the law and the regulations, and to the extent that we can go through it in a public session, I would just like us to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. A sober living home is a type of group facility where persons and residents agree to stay clean and sober during their residency. These facilities are separated from licensed treatment facilities in that no formal substance abuse treatment program or counseling is provided at the home. Essentially, the home is used only by recovering alcoholics and substance abusers who live communally in an effort to support their sobriety. State law requires that residential treatment facilities serving six or few persons are considered a residential use of property, and like nothing else, not like a commercial property, just like a residential property. Such facilities still require a license from the—the State Department, but the local jurisdiction can only apply the same development standards and use standards that it could for a family of six that lived in a home. So the—the state is restricting our ability to—to restrict these within our own local jurisdiction. Any standards cannot crush—any local standards that are developed for such uses cannot frustrate the purpose of the Federal Fair Housing Act, ADA guidelines, and the California Fair Employment Act, or the Lanternman Act. Newport Beach has recently reached a settlement with three groups in litigation that has lasted over seven years on this topic, and they paid up to $5.25 million in settlements. Costa Mesa's had a little more success, but yet that still hasn't—that door hasn't closed on whether that's going to turn out in an affirmative manner for that city as well. In conclusion, state and federal laws have severely tied our ability to regulate certain types of residential uses. Residential care facilities, for example, those are licensed by the state that have six or fewer residents, must be allowed within the city's residential zones and are to be treated only as residential use by staff, the building department, any regulator that comes in that is—is employed by us. The city may not require any permits or even business license for these types of uses. So in—in reality, we don't even have the evidence to say that it's open. We've done—I've done two searches on the property. I've never seen a car in the driveway, and I'm not only seeing chairs in the—on the porch, not even cars in the street in front of the property. So we actually don't even have the evidence that it's still—that it's even open yet.
So, regulation-wise, though, so there's—well, like I said, I mean, this is just one councilmember's opinion, but I—you know, there's a lot of different things that are applied, laws, regulations, ordinances that are applied to owners of a house, and their construction of their house, the, you know, retrofit, you know. I—I would hope that we could find ways to make this difficult. I really—I—I don't know how other way to say it, but I think that if we let this go, like you said, and we're going through this process, I—you know, this is the tip of the iceberg, and I really firmly believe that this will be the beginning of a bunch of them. The—the one thing is that once people are in these programs, they—it's like anything else that's, you know, hey, look, I'm in Los Al at this area. People that do these, I mean, the thing we're not talking about here is the funding of—people don't go and live there free. They—they actually, you know, pay money to go and to be a part of this program. There's a lot of them are administered. I—what are the regulations in these houses to have medical staff on—onsite, or?
There are no treatment—there's no treatment related to—to this type of use.
Okay, because I've seen them to where, you know, drug use with some—well, not drug use, but, you know, people that had to be administered certain types of drugs to help them overcome their problem was—was something that actually was taking place at the place I'm familiar with. And, you know, and like I said, you have the people outside. A lot of times, these people are in transition, and they're not working. You've got, you know, people standing out on the streets and outside, smoking and doing all this stuff, and it really becomes very obvious what is going on. So, like I said, I—I'm really concerned that, you know, this is kind of going, and I—I guess from a staff perspective, legally, not trying to do anything illegal, you know, is there any preventative actions that we can take to try to make sure—you know, Costa Mesa and Newport, if you study, this is a case study, they waited until it became a problem, till they tried to stop it, and then they—that's—I mean, just—I mean, we are in the very beginnings, so I—I don't know. I just really think—and up here on this council, I guarantee you, when the thing starts to proliferate, they're going to go, what the heck was the city council doing? Why—why is the city actually allowing this? And, you know, it's, well, hey, look, it's a state, you know. Right here in your third, fourth page here, you say, "The Los Alamos Municipal Code does not specify where sober living facilities may be located." You know, I—it's true. It is true. And I—I just—I guess I wanted staff to know, at least we're one of five, I'm very interested if there's any way to slow this down. I mean, look, we had another thing, the massage issue that was on, and we said, hey, look, we're putting a moratorium on something so we can start to take a better look and see what the impact is. They're legally allowed to have massage establishments, but we took a council vote or, you know, to actually put a moratorium on. I really think we need to take a look at this. Is there anything that is in our toolbox? We're not full-time staff people, so we don't have any idea, but, you know, from that perspective, is it—it is what it is, or is there options?
We have to legally turn to the city attorney and see if there's any options that we could do from a legal standpoint to be proactive on the front end.
Not if we are not willing to be sued and defend litigation such as Newport Beach and Costa Mesa have been defending. I mean, basically, we have to treat these sober living facilities as if a family of, you know, two parents and four children moved in. We can't enact special regulations to prohibit it or—or impose conditions such as conditional use permit-type conditions. There's case law, there's, you know, the state legislature, and our—our hands are pretty much tied.
So the—the tools of parking, of construction modification, of anything there that starts to make this to be more than—more of an institutional facility than a actual residence, I—I guess?
It's just nuisance laws. I mean, if—to the extent that we have nuisance laws prohibiting public nuisances and disturbances and noise disturbances and things like that, we can enforce those just like we would if, you know, a college fraternity moved into a house and started having loud parties, or or any other group moved into a residential area and started disturbing the neighbors. So, I mean, we can—we can do those kinds of police enforcement, but in terms of zoning enforcement, there's not much of anything we can do legally.
Is this the only one that we're aware of at this point? You said that they're undetectable. I—I was just pushing on that a little bit, Stephen.
Well, this one actually filed an application with our office to open, and then that's when we realized that we cannot act upon this application. We can't approve them or deny them.
Okay. I just wanted to bring this up with the city council, see if anybody else had any interest. I—you know, it's terrible to have to bring up something we really don't have any tools in the toolbox to limit it. Like I said, I've just seen the other side of this thing, and I've watched home prices, specifically where where I've seen this happen, just plummet. And I even won a neighborhood, I—you know, all the neighbors put signs in their front yard to bring out and illuminate what I—I saw this house was in the neighborhood, and and then done it consistently for three or four years. Well, you can't sell a house on that street with all these signs pointing to the house that's bad, you know, going through the process. I said a lot of this when we did the testimony on the Senate Bill 01 when we went through this discussion before, but it's—it seems like it's just another way under, and it's unfortunate. Thank you.
Thank you.
They are restricted, are they not, to six people?
Yeah, it hits a different category if it gets seven or more.
So the—the only way to follow through in terms of what Mayor Pretend Egger is talking about really is neighbors detecting issues and reporting those issues that potentially rise to the occasion of there's more people in there than are allowed, or that there's disturbances that—
Yeah, garage conversions, things that anybody could do to their property if they skipped the building department and didn't get the proper permits. They were closing off rooms and having separate entrances, if they're marketing it as individual apartments, those kind of things, just like if it was any other house, you would enforce it with that, and it doesn't strip your ability to enforce the same codes you enforce upon another house that hasn't obtained permits.
So that's about the only solution you can do.
So how far can you go with that? I mean, is it kind of the—the scarlet ladder of you send out a, you know, some sort of a city notification to everybody in that area and say, "Look for these things"? I mean, because most people, they have no idea what's going on three doors down until it becomes a problem. So, you know, I mean, the—the—the people in that area, do we have to notify them that they—there has been a house established in that? I mean, we—we know because they filed something with us, but I bet you, two doors down on either side, they have no idea that this is about to become a sober living house. Is there any notification process?
No, not for us.
And you can't do it.
Yeah, I don't—I don't think—
Well, that's what I'm asking, is there a scarlet ladder-type scenario where it'd be illegal to notify people? I mean, maybe it's a proactive approach from the city. The city's like, "Look, let's educate you on this. This is happening by you." Like, not—it's sort of like Megan's Law, right? It's happening by you. Here's your—you know, there's nothing the city can do. Here's the things you need to look out for to keep this thing in check.
Not officially.
No?
And if we know—I mean, we can notify them, but if they're not doing anything, you know, it's—it's—it's a home. It's—it's like a foster home, you know, on—on the adult's side, but, you know, hey, beware, you've got a foster home next door to you, and you're going to hear six screaming babies, but there's nothing we can do about it. I mean, it's a home.
Yeah.
The only thing I would suggest to staff and not to second-guess, carry by any means, but reach out to the League of California Cities and ACCOC and see if they have any other suggestions. We pay those dues for a reason, and just see if there's anything. But it sounds like we have to treat it like any other home, and I guarantee if there's a problem with noise or loitering or anything else, we'll hear from the neighbors.
Yeah, that's a good idea, actually.
Why not?
There have been league papers on this for the city attorneys. They—they're online, and I'm pretty sure Lisa, who participated in this with me and Stephen, reviewed that, reviewed those. But if—if you'd like, I can try and find out and circulate it to the council.
I—I think it's just more so if we had questioned, we know what our limits are and what we can and can't do. I mean, we can't just go into a home because we think there's something going on that doesn't have to be registered with the city for any business license or anything. You know, that's a certain invasion of privacy that any other person with six people living there, all under one family, would be offended by. And so we—we really have to be careful about what we're calling out as, we don't want you here.
So definitely on the legal side. I guess on the staff side, there are Tony Cordinas or whoever our league person is, would there—would—is that both sides when we're talking with?
Yeah, we can do—you know, we have our contacts through the league and through ACCOC, and we can reach out and see if there's any other ideas there. Doesn't—I mean, doesn't sound like there's very much on the front end, but more reactive code enforcement nuisance-type issues, looking out for that type of thing. But as Stephen said, comparable to what we would do in other code enforcement-type cases. If noise issues come up or other things arise, we would enforce that, but we will reach out at the staff level as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Mayor and council initiated business. Would like to go first.
I'll go then. I—I did have a chance to attend the Wings, Wheels, Rotors exposition, and I'm sure councilmember Gross will talk about it more, but I just wanted to say I got to attend that. I—I'm also on the OC Parks Commission as the inland city's representative, and there were a couple of things that came up in the last meeting having to do with pests that, I guess, bore into the trees and destroyed them. So one of them is a golden—gold-spotted oak borer, and the other one is a polyphagus shot hole borer, and these are some vectors, I guess, that Stephen, you might want to be aware of. I don't know if you've heard anything, but—and then I—I'm—I'm going to ask—I've been trying to get the Parks Commission to take more of a leadership role in this, and I will talk with the director and see kind of where they're going, because they—they fall under the purview of the Board of Supervisors, and they may have some limitations on what they can do, but it would be very nice if they can be a resource for the other—the 34 cities that should know this information, so we can try and contain some of these things all together. The last thing is that I did ask the city manager about getting prepared for El Nino that it's coming, so for the residents and businesses out there, there is a—some, I guess, outreach that you might want to contact the city, look at the website, but I'd say for us to be prepared as we can collectively and, you know, just take—take precautions now. Clean up your rain gutters. When you put your trash barrels out, make sure it stands away from the curb, because I—I remember back in 1995, one of the problems that happened in Cypress is that it was trash day. Trash barrels fell over, knocked the trash into the gutters, and backed up the gutters, and that caused a significant amount of flooding on Ball and Bloomfield and over there by that nature park. So, simple things we can do, I think we ought to try and do that, and I'd say, do what you can now, because if—it—if it's really bad, then we might be on our own for at least a few hours, if not a day or two. So with that, I want to thank the city for having this and having tips out there. And I know Seal Beach is looking at offering sand, I think, to the residents, and I know over there on Arbor Park, there's a sand pit that one can go over there and bag up sand. Looks like it's beach sand, so you might want to do that as well. But thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Shelley?
I'm sure. I also did attend the Wings, Wheels, and Rotors. We definitely missed the helicopter rides and the Young Eagles, but the rest of it, the—the car show and the military displays and the first responders and the food were always good as usual, and hopefully those will be back next year. I did attend the Cypress Pair Breakfast. Rob Johnson, Mayor Rob Johnson, did a tremendous job there. It was well-represented by all the different faiths in Cypress and did a great historical lesson on the different churches and everything. I thought it was a—it was a great time. I attended the Board of Equalization Women's Conference that was hosted by Diana Harkey. That was about 1,000 women of state, county, city, elected officials, and also women business owners, which was great. I attended the Chamber Breakfast at the Griffin Grill last Friday, which is officially now open as of today. It's phenomenal inside. I mean, this really brings a community eatery with all of the Los Al traditions there, so I'm excited and wish them the best. I attended my first OCFA Reserve Firefighter Class graduation. There were 34 graduates, three of them women, which was always nice, and it was just—it was a great ceremony. These are reserve firefighters who are called in when needed. They have to put in a certain amount of time every month, and many of them are hoping to become full-time firefighters. And I did last week attended the ACCOC dinner. They did a— They did a program called War Stories and Tough, War Stories, Tough Stories and Leadership was public servant. And a couple of fire chiefs, police chiefs spoke, and that was real good. And then finally, we did have our district city working group. We did look at the traffic study. It was finalized. And now the city and district are working on timelines and budgets for both sides on the improvements over by, particularly by the high school, Cerritos, adding additional turn lanes in and out of the high school, both on city property and also on the high school property. And it was very, very positive. And I think we all came to a consensus that this could work. And we got some of the details down as far as what needs to be torn out and added and everything and some quick timelines. So that was good. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Most of my things are on the website, which is losallos.net. But I'd like to point out, it's kind of a busy month from the standpoint of the military. A lot of things occurring related to the base. I had an opportunity last week to join the Governor's Military Council, which we've been participating in since last February, I think, primarily by conference calls, but they were out here. So in the LA area, I had an opportunity to join them on a tour of SpaceX facilities over in Hawthorne. And then we went from there over to the Los Angeles Air Force Base in El Segundo. And they had a roundtable. It was extremely interesting and just helps, I think, on our continued outreach with the members of that committee. There's a three-star general that's involved and state officials. And it's a good program for us to, particularly with looking toward the base, for us to be involved in. I was invited to a lunch and a town hall meeting with Lieutenant General Jeffrey Tally, who's a three-star command. He's actually chief of the US Army Reserve at Fort Bragg. That's where Major General Taitu is going to be assigned as one of his aides. This past weekend, there was a retirement for two 79th Sustainment Command sergeants. One, well, combined, they had over 60 years of service to the country. So that was a very nice opportunity to wish them well in retirement. The Veterans Ride, the Veterans Honor Ride on the 8th did occur. It started over at the Joint Forces Training Base and wandered through 15 cities, both in LA and Orange County, with a stop at the Veterans Center. And then they wound up over at Legion Post 716 for kind of a final get-together and barbecue. I had the opportunity to attend two events with our Assemblyman Travis Allen. I believe Warren was at one of those, which was in Seal Beach honoring Richard Glassman, who is a correctional officer at the juvenile detention facility, I think up in the Ventura area. But he was attacked by these young felons and injured while they were trying to get his keys to escape. And if that had occurred, we'd have had a, you know, major problem. And one of his fellow officers kind of came in and helped. I did attend the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast in Cypress. That was very, very nicely done with all of the churches in Cypress. Be something for us to consider doing in the future with the church facilities and so on in Los Alamos. I had the opportunity to also attend a legislative forum that was put on by the City of Westminster, which was kind of comparable in a way, but on a much smaller scale to the legislative mixture that we hold. It was very interesting and it ran long, is all I can say. Got to participate in trunk or treat at Little Cottonwood again this year for Halloween. That's been kind of a fun thing that we've done in the past. And I would like to mention for my fellow councilmembers that the Military Affairs Committee, the Regional Military Affairs Committee, that will be meeting this month at Joint Forces Training Base on a week from Tuesday, a week from tomorrow. The presentation is going to be by Brigadier General James Baldwin, who is the Adjutant General for the State of California National Guard. One of the guys that we're trying to work with very closely on some of the projects that we're engaging in. But this will be the first time that he's been down to actually speak. And he asked me to make sure that people brought plenty of questions because he's going to talk about current threats. And considering what happened over the weekend in Paris, I've been watching some of the things that he's been talking about. So I think it's going to be a very good and lively session. He just did finish a tour of a number of Middle East installations and meeting with counterparts. So I think that's going to be a good session. And I would encourage you, if you have time at 3:30 a week from Tuesday, to join us. With that, I'll pass it on. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mayor Murphy for allowing me to go to the November 8th City Selection Committee. That was a lot of fun. Thank you. So, yeah, we got to go and vote for a lot of different folks, including, you know, different boards, OCTA, et cetera. I also wanted to talk a little bit about St. Isidore. They have started a new program and it's called the Second Sunday Concerts. And this last Sunday, we actually had a concert there where it featured Maria Teresa Diaz, who many of us know within the city, Los Alamos area resident, lives over in Rosmore. She's an opera singer back in the days in Cuba. They also had accompanied Ricardo Fernandez, which they, actually with Havana Symphony Orchestra. And then a pianist, which was unbelievable. And her name was Estela Fernandez, not related to Ricardo. But, I mean, what a classy show, unbelievable. They did about 12 different songs. They had an intermission in between. And they had filled up the chapel at St. Isidore. And so it was really something, sitting in that chapel for use. You know, when the diocese owned it, they wouldn't allow us to go in the chapel. But we were in there. They did a great concert. It was really cool. And they've kicked off this, so every second Sunday of every month, they'll have a different local music group in there. Flamenco guitar, you know, classical, even like local kids acoustic. You know, they'll do like kind of a unplugged type thing in there. And I would just encourage that if anybody's interested in the community to go and just check out a really, really neat local kind of feature and the culture of the community. I also want to thank John Underwood. It's 6 to 8, 8 o'clock on the second Sunday. And so there'll be another one coming up in December. John Underwood had come over and filmed this. It's going to be on LATV. And I just want to encourage everybody to take a look at it and you'll just get an idea of kind of what went down there. It was really, a really kind of an added cultural thing. I mean, I haven't seen anything like that. We have all these great music groups, the high school, the choir, everything. But, you know, when you see someone like Maria Teresa, who you wouldn't imagine has this operatic voice, it was so magical. So I would just encourage everybody to check it out on LATV. And if you're open on the second Sunday, 6 to 8 p.m. I also attended another meeting at St. Isidore. They have an annual meeting to go through the membership drive that continue to pay down the loan. I just wanted to report that they've been able to pay about, I think they're down to almost $480,000 of a loan. That's total $700,000. They're really trying to pay that thing down fast. I would encourage everybody in the community, again, to try to kind of help. And I think what you're seeing is that that facility is turning into a true community center. Something that I thought was really interesting, I've been associated with that since 2009, but I've never seen this before. They actually had the user groups that utilize the center come and talk to all of the people that support this. So they had the AA leader come in and talk about that. You know, the AA group has been in there for 30 years. They've been meeting in there. You know, they had the different NICA Columbus. They had all these different groups that really have a tremendous amount of history in our community that meet in there and have been meeting there for years. So, you know, it was almost like something I felt like we haven't really exposed, even some of the people that are really active. And when you really get an appreciation for the community activities that go on there, it was really, really good. I wanted to put in a couple plugs. I'm looking over at Corey. He's really stirring up the business for Race on the Base. You know, February 27th is going to be one of the biggest years, one of the biggest days of the year for 2016. Three events collide on that day. We have the Race on the Base, February 27th in the morning. So we started off over there. We're all racing against Mayor Murphy. And then we head from there to the next party. Yeah, well. And then you head from there to, they have the Americana Awards, a local event at, you know, that's going to be happening at the Disneyland Hotel. It'll be really nice, always is. And then that night later, they have the Casa U shelters wicked, where they have, they're giving, you know, selling dinner tickets. Then you move on over to go see the show wicked. So I've seen wicked at Pantages. I have not seen it at the Seegerstrom. It ought to be an unbelievable show. Obviously, a little bit of a conflict for some of us on the council because we're very supportive of both groups. But if anybody in the community is interested in going to any of those events, the Casa event or the Americana. Again, Americana, great event for our community. We collectively, our Person of the Year this year is a lieutenant, or not lieutenant, but Tom Lassert retired. So he's been really helpful with Dean and the entire group at the Chamber and helped get the Wings Wheels and Rotors. And Dean will tell you more than anything about what he's done in our community, but he's retiring. And the Americana Committee chose him as being our Person of the Year. Again, as we're getting ready to go into the holiday season, I just want to put in plugs so people can plan far enough out. The Race on the Base. At this point, Corey, I want to just ask you, and I know it's a little impromptu, but we track how many people register online. And we're a little bit behind on our registrations. Could you give us just a really quick update? And I'm going to talk for just a few more seconds while you find it. But if you can just go ahead and tell us what are the stats? And talk a little bit about the Night Before Event because that's probably the coolest thing that we're doing this year on the Race on the Base.
Thank you, Mayor Pretend Edgar and City Council. Our Race on the Base, like you stated, is, we like to say now it's a two-day event. It's February 26th. It's a Friday as well as Saturday, February 27th. The event will kick off about 1:00 at the base with the Los Alamos Medical Center Vendor Fair, the Health and Wellness Expo. We'll go to about 7:30 at night. At 5:30, we're going to have a live band. And at 6:30, we're highlighting our newest event, our 1K Kids Glow in the Dark Run. We're really, really excited. We're trying to shore up all of the hidden gems that will come out as far as black lights, lasers and all kinds of LED lit up paraphernalia. So we're really excited about that. And then bright and early in the morning, our first event kicks off, I believe, at, let me make sure that I can get it right, but I believe it's about 6:50 in the morning with our opening ceremonies, National Anthem. And at 6:55, our 10K Hand Cycle and Wheelchair Race, followed by the 10K Run, the Junior Reverse Triathlons, the 5K Run, the 5K Walk, our second stage of the Reverse Triathlon and then two waves of our, of our adult or 12 and over Reverse Triathlon. It is our 35th anniversary. We've got some amazing things besides the band, besides the Kids Glow Run. We also have brand-new sublimated shirts. And for those that don't know what that means, it basically means the shirts are actually dyed rather than the shirt sticking to you with the screen printing. It's actually embedded in the material. So it'll be just like you're wearing a, just a regular t-shirt with nothing written on it. So we're really excited about that. We've got some really nice, brand-new medals that we're really, really excited about. They're absolutely beautiful. Check out our Facebook, Race on the Base on Facebook. And we post pictures of the medals, kind of in anticipation as well as the shirts as we get a little bit closer. But definitely encourage people to register early. It is cheaper if you register early. If you've got a big group that wants to participate, we offer discounts. We offer opportunities for charities to be able to fundraise. So any 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization can fundraise, can get discounts. And we're actually offering some money back this year for several of our charities that get really involved. So we're really excited. We definitely encourage people to get our participation up. We're already over 1,000 participants. We're actually down probably about 100 from where we were at this point last year. But we're confident. Again, go to our Facebook, go to our Twitter account, join, follow us, like us. We do offer discounts on a routine basis or money back if you like it and share it and get friends to participate. We will actually refund your full, your full registration. And then obviously through Southland Credit Union, our title sponsor, if you want to race for free, 5K, 10K, just join them. Open up a $25 account. Or if you open up a credit card, they'll pay for your Reverse Triathlon as well.
Yeah, so that's a pretty good deal for, so for 25 bucks, you get a $50 about approximate registration through Southland. Yeah, I'm really excited. And I tell you, the deal that you have to do is get your kids involved in the night event for the run, running the Glow in the Dark because those shirts are pretty cool. They actually glow in the dark, right?
They will under black light.
Okay. Well, I have one of those too, so I'm going for it. And I thought, Shelley, you talked about potentially, are you going to step it up with the triathlon this year or?
Well, are you?
Well, that's what I heard. I mean, I thought that's what you, the memo said. But, okay, with that, I think that's all I have. I, you know, I just want to close tonight. I have family in France, in Paris. I just, I really was appreciative that the Sunburst Academy took a moment of silence. And I just, you know, I think when something like that happens and you, first thing you want to do is find out how everybody is. And so, you know, I just wanted to thank all the people that reached out. I also want to say that it always is amazing to me on Veterans Day, how many people send me emails thanking me for my service. I just want to say, community, thank you. I really appreciate that. It was so long ago, it's almost hard to believe that you were in the service. But it's just really kind of cool that people actually come up to you and tell you thanks. And I would say if you see service members and you see them around locally, down around Starbucks, wherever, go up to them, tell them thank you for their service, I think, you know, for what they're doing for us. And I think this just illuminates one more time. They're going to get called to service and there's going to be a lot of stuff going on. And so we just want to be appreciative of the people currently serving. Thank you.
Thank you. I was honored to be asked by the Los Alamos High School Band to come and give some certificates to three ladies who made the Army All-American Band. And we're the only school in the country that got three members on there. The two Carpenterier sisters and Miss Toy, who I believe are going to be here in January, right Wendy? Okay, and we're going to honor them again as well as Tom Plunkett, who was the band director over there. I was at trunk or treat with Dean. And I was at Wings Wheels and Rotors with Dean. And I actually went to the Travis Allen Seal Beach event with Dean, but apparently it didn't make much of an impression because he thought it was Warren.
I'm flattered to be mistaken for the mayor.
I guess the 20 minutes and those two plates of hors d'oeuvres we ate wasn't enough. Would like to welcome our new interim chief. And for those on the staff who didn't get any mic time today, we'll see what we can do for you next time around. Would like to have one serious moment. I'd like to see if we could do something along the lines of police appreciation. Maybe with the night out, we could tie something in there. But, you know, it's, the police are getting a raw deal in this country today. And I was surprised at the LAPOA fundraiser that one of the officers got up and said, you know, "The police are under attack." And I didn't think of it in this city. And I think it's important that they know that the community is behind them. The, I did go to the Chamber Breakfast to hear General Reddick's. It was good to see Griffin's Grill up. And as Shelley said, a lot of great history in that room. And finally, I'd like to close tonight in memory of Elizabeth Murphy, who would have been 93. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see. Wanted to mention Winter Wonderland is December 5th, Saturday, December 5th, Reagan Street. Corey, you want to give just a real brief time period and update for the community?
Sure. Thank you. The Winter Wonderland, Fourth Annual Winter Wonderland Event is set for Saturday, December 5th from 4:00 to 7:30 p.m. at St. Isidore Historical Plaza and on Reagan Street. 25 tons of snow, Santa's Village, bounce houses, games and arts and crafts with Build It Workspace. Lots of different activities. It workspace, lots of different activities. We've got the stage. I believe we've got about 15 minutes of available time, so if anybody's interested in performing, but otherwise, pretty booked up. Lots of students, lots of classes, lots of programs. We're really excited, all free to the community. If there's anything that you want to purchase there, you have to pay for that from the vendors. We're probably going to get close to 30 vendors, 35 vendors again this year. And the food trucks, you'll have to pay for. But otherwise, all the snow, all the activities is all free of charge. We've got several community partners that we definitely encourage folks to check out on our website. But definitely encourage everybody to come out. And the City Council, along with the Chamber of Commerce, will be lighting the tree, I believe it's 5:30 p.m., with a big tree lighting ceremony. So we're really excited about that.
Thanks, Corey. And I want to mention the city, congratulations to the City Council and Public Works staff for receiving an American Public Works Association Award. And it's going to be handed out, distributed to the mayor and staff at Lakewood Sycamore Plaza, Wednesday, December 9th, 11:30 to 1:30 p.m. And it's for Design of Coyote Creek. So it's a very inspirational award to be proud of for the city, I wanted to mention. And the Commissioner's Dinner is coming up on Tuesday, December 8th. And one more, the next City Council meeting is on December 14th, not at the regular Monday, but it will be on Monday, December 14th.
Thank you. With that, we will adjourn until December 14th at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.